All right, it's seven o'clock, so we'll get started. Can, um, let's see. Liz or Cecilia, can you confirm that you can hear us? Yes, okay, thank you. Evelyn, can we do a roll call, please?
Trustee Weekly.
Present.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Vice President Lawson.
Oh, here.
President Marcus.
Thank you. I'm not used to sitting on the seat, it's been a while. So, um, thank you everyone for joining us. Um, I think I'm gonna skip the formalities because everyone in the audience is staff and you all know how to submit speaker's cards if you'd like to. Um, so we do have Cecilia here, she is out of town, so she's um, joining us. Uh, she will not be partaking in any of the votes. Yeah.
She's an audience member, yes.
Um, let's see, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Uh, I was wondering if we could move uh, eight point two, eight point three, and eight point five to consent. That's the variable term waiver provisional internship permit and exemption from the required expenditures.
Is that okay? But do you have any objections to that? David?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So eight two, eight three, and eight five, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Let's see. There are no other changes. Um, can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, oral communication, Evelyn? Do we?
No speaker's cards.
No speaker cards, okay. Um, so we will jump right into six point one, the twenty-three, twenty-four health and wellness department update.
That's wonderful, and we have Ms. Patrina here with us tonight, and she is going to give her presentation on the health and wellness department, the update. Trina's been doing a fantastic job with this position. You don't know how amazing this position is, David, because of of the change in the personnel that we have at this point in time that we've had in the past couple of years. So do you need to, your, um, presentation, do you want to give it to somebody? Sure. I'll get it up there in a second.
Oh.
Come on up. And then there's a Patrina, there's a button on the mic.
Oh wait, who's presenting? Please present.
Or you can give it, or you can send it. You can send it over here to, um, to Anna, and Anna can do it. Just in case the audience is about to wow.
I'll share with you. Okay. I'm in now. Oh, it's a little red button on the microphone.
It's a black button, and then it'll turn red.
On the right, the button on the right. Right.
Turns red when you turn it on.
There you go.
And here it comes. There we go, so people in the audience.
Let's go. All right, I'm ready, you guys. Sorry about that. Thank you for having me, Board of Trustees, Dr. Baker, Executive Cabinet. I'm happy to be here on behalf of the Health and Wellness Department to share with you um, our past goals from last year, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, as well as upcoming goals for this school year. So first, I just want to introduce you to our nursing team. We have some wonderful nurses in our district who not only support our students in their minor boo-boos, but they also really, uh, keen in on students that have serious medical concerns and their place throughout the district. Our RNs here, um, help support all school sites. And then we also have some of our LVNs who support our district office as well as different sites. And, um, they also work one-to-one with specific students. In addition to our nursing staff, we also have our BCBA support, and they help with coming out of COVID. We noticed that there were some concerns coming out of, um, the classroom with some students' behaviors. And so they really help to support our teachers and provide training to them as well as supports and techniques to help guide our students in the classroom. So, uh, through the LCAP, thank you, Ms. Herrera, and also Ms. Wolf, Ms. Wolf. Um, they help to support and fund these positions throughout the year. And they also oversee behavior technicians that will soon be, um, in place to help support the classroom teacher on a consistent basis throughout the school year. So many of the duties that I do, the job that I do, um, not only comes from the support through the district, but the Sequoia Healthcare District, they have, um, contributed over one point seven million, uh, funds to our district. And so they help to fund our staffing as far as part of my position, as well as two of our registered nurses and our LVNs. And they also help to support counseling, parent education, a number of different, um, community partnerships. And so you'll continue to see that they will support us, and we provide updates to them on a regular basis of the work that's being done. And if any time you guys have any questions or at the end of my presentation, feel free to ask. So our nurses deliver numerous different types of supports to our students. And one of those supports are hearing screenings. And those are mandated by the state that they have to conduct every year, um, at the grade levels that are listed here on this spreadsheet. And they also have to support our SLCs and our RLCs for our special needs students. And so as you can see, for last year's school year, they screened over twenty-seven hundred students. And looking at that number, a hundred and thirty-two of those students failed their hearing screenings. And so they were referred on to their families for further assessments. And we know that, of course, if our students can't hear, they can't access the curriculum. So it's, it's definitely a plus that we have this service in the district, so our students can receive early support um, whenever they're having any type of hearing difficulties. So in addition to the hearing screenings that are conducted, our nurses also do vision screenings with those same mandated grade levels, but we have a partnership with Vision to Learn. And Vision to Learn, they come to our school, they've been working with us for the last couple of years. And the schools that are listed here on the spreadsheets are the school sites that they screened students, all students at the school K through eighth grade, if it had a middle school component. And, um, they screened over twenty-five hundred students in the district last year. And as you can see, out of those twenty-five hundred students, six hundred and sixty-eight of our students failed. And then continued on, they, um, did exams for those students, which was five hundred and ninety-two. And out of those five hundred and ninety-two students that were screened, Vision to Learn provided free eyewear, eyeglasses to those students. And in addition to those eyeglasses, um, they get a warranty, so if a student breaks the glasses or if they lose the glasses on purpose sometimes, they will replace those glasses, um, for two years. And so this year, the focus is on Adelante, MIT, and Hoover. They typically work with our title schools and, um, and they will go to a school site every other year, so they don't see the same school sites every single year. They visit them every other year. And then we also had a program called Eye Care that screened our preschool students. And out of the two hundred and ninety-three students that were screened, we had sixty-two students that were referred for glasses. So, um, you, you see even our little ones are being, um, oops, our little ones are, um, having vision issues as well. And so that early identification is definitely something that's needed for, um, them to access their education. So in addition, we have more services through Sun Reese's Dental. And so Sun Reese's is funded through the Sequoia Healthcare District to support our kindergarteners, uh, being screened. And then they also are funded through, uh, Sequoia Dignity Health. And they provide the grant funding for a hundred and fifty stu- a hundred and fifty preschool students. And as you can see, there's some kiddos on the bottom being screened, and they also get, uh, give oral education to students. So while the other students are being screened, the other students get to play with toothbrushes, learn how to brush their teeth. Um, they learn about what's good germs, bad germs, good, good food, bad food. And so it's, it's really entertaining watching the kids throughout this process. So here are some, some numbers, and I'm gonna give you some comparisons. So Sequoia Healthcare District, they provide dental screenings for our district as well as charter schools within the Redwood City School District area. So this twelve hundred and thirty-eight number reflects all of those students. Uh, within this, within our district, Redwood City School District, they screened nine hundred and thirty-nine students last year. But when we looked at the numbers and we did the comparison, um, within Redwood City, forty-one percent of the students had active decay. So the numbers still really compare to what's here on the chart. And then as far as students having urgent dental needs, uh, the students in our district, it was seventeen percent. So it was a little bit higher than the average number here. And once again, we have our little ones coming. Yeah, but we have our little ones coming to school, so if their mouth hurts, some of them aren't attending school because they're at home with an achy mouth, or they're coming to school and having trouble eating lunch, or just having that pain, and they can't think about their education. And so when, um, after the screening, the dental department at Sun Reese's will contact families and let them know if the student has failed their exam, and then they will refer them out for services. And for all the students that have urgent dental needs, if the student doesn't have a dental home, then Sun Reese's will make an appointment to see them in their office. Is there a question?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realize you weren't done with that one. Um, so I, I was curious, so the twelve thirty-eight total number of students screened, those are all kindergartners and preschoolers?
Yes, and they're in our district as well as some of the surrounding charter schools in Redwood City.
And so do we have a program if a student comes in a different grade and is complaining about their teeth? Is there like a signup program or some counseling that's done?
So where to go? What will happen is when Sun Reese's knows, so oftentimes we have teachers or principals or any staff member that will know that Sun Reese's will be on campus, and they will bring a student down. And so Sun Reese's will see any student at any grade level. And if they're at a school site, say it's a middle school, that they don't typically do the screenings, if they know of the name, they will make an appointment to go to the school and conduct the screenings for those students.
Does this include sealant delivery?
Repeat that.
Uh, does this include dental sealant delivery for the children, or is it just a passive screening?
It's just a passive screening, and so, you know, students get their goodie bags, and then, um, once they notice that there's any type of decay, they will take pictures of the student's mouth. So then that way, when they contact the parents, they can let them know exactly what needs to be done so that they can receive further assessment from a dental provider.
Given the high percentage of kids with dental issues that we're seeing here, the data seems pretty strong. Uh, have we looked at engaging like an active sealant program to help seal their teeth?
No, but that is definitely something that I can look into.
Cool. It seems the CDC recommends it, so.
Yes. And, um, also the CDPH also recommends for all of our kinders to have an oral health assessment. So parents also have the right to opt out of this, um, and they can get it done on their own. But many of our parents do choose to have their students screened, so it, it's great. So counseling, counseling is a definite big need in our district. And so in addition to our mental health counselors that is funded through our district, that is, um, managed by Anna Paula, we also have outside counseling that's contracted through One Life. And One Life was one of our primary contracted agencies for last year, as well as for this school year. And so currently, um, I think we're actually even over because there is an amendment coming tonight uh, for additional counseling hours. But, um, there was a request for about four hundred and forty additional counseling contracted hours, and that's in addition to what our current mental health counselors provide at each school site. And that is being provided by twenty-six therapists at eleven school sites. There is one school site that does not have counseling, and that's Roy Cloud. And they're using a different mental health model where they're funding, um, their counselor within. And so they're not contracting any services, but they, the school is still receiving, um, counseling support. So one of my goals last year was a big champion of staff health and wellness. I went to a conference and I came back just energized, really excited, because I wanted our staff to be well. So I created numerous of it, uh, events for our, um, for our staff to participate in. And here's just a few photos of our staff members. I had to kind of Photoshop some people in because I forgot to take a picture, you know, during the event. But, um, it wa- it was great to have not only, um, different community partners help participate, but we had some of our very own teach classes such as spin classes, cooking classes, um, vision boarding. So we, we had a great time, and ultimately the goal was just to relieve stress of our staff and give them another outlet. Some of the classes were during the week, some of them, um, staff came out on the weekend, but it was a great experience to just be able to spend time with staff, and I attended all of the events. So another very humbling experience I had last year was the Holiday Food Grant that we received through the Sequoia Healthcare District and, um, Sequoia Hospital Dignity Health. Uh, we were awarded eight thousand dollars, and with that eight dol- eight thousand dollars, the focus was on providing, uh, food for our McKinney Bento at our non-community schools. Our current community schools do a wonderful job with, um, doing food distribution, but I really wanted to focus in on those schools that um, didn't have community centers. And so we were able to, um, deliver fifty-six food baskets. Uh, we had students, um, help to support the efforts in getting bags out the car, helping us put together the food boxes. We have Cynthia over there on the left, we did runs to the food bank and several runs to the food bank. And, um, we had parents that would come in or get a ride and come pick up the food. We distribute them through, uh, MIT Community Center. And then for parents that were unable to pick up food bags, we actually went and delivered to their homes. So it was a really humbling, a fun experience getting to meet parents and just the joy of kids seeing like, food is coming, like, what do you have for us? So it, it was, it was very fun, and we hope, again, to be able to, um, apply for a grant like this, because this is an ongoing grant that they will offer. Another fun event, like, my job is so fun, guys, you just don't even know. So another, another fun event was during Earth Day, so I'm on the Child and Nutrition, um, Service Committee. And so we were talking about milk, um, and waste, and so I thought about, let's do something with these milk cartons. And so, um, at Orion and Adelante, I had a chance to pair up with the garden teachers, and we collected, uh, milk cartons throughout the month. And at Orion, they had classroom gardens where the teachers had the gardens in the window, so cute. And at Adelante Selby, their garden clubs, they planted, um, beets. And luckily, the rain had just stopped. This was like when we had all of that massive rain, so it was just in time for the growing season. So that was another fun project. Being on different committees, there's always someone that wants to do something, and I'm always like, okay, what do you guys want to do? So being part of the Safe Routes to School Committee, um, one of the parents said, hey, let's do this pilot. And, um, it was a parent that's part of, uh, Roy Cloud, and she wanted to spearhead a bike safety training. And so we were able to conduct the bike, the bike safety training at Roy Cloud um, and Henry Ford, and we have the collaboration of PE Plus, um, Redwood City Together, as well as parents at Roy Cloud. And it was a fun event. And it also helped me to realize, this was for third-grade students, that uh, for some of the students, it was their first time ever riding a bike or being on a scooter, and that's something that you just don't normally realize. And so, uh, it was, it was a good experience because they brought in, they brought in scooters. We had students that, you know, loaned their bikes to other students or their scooters and let them ride. But then you could tell as they started to wobble, like, you've never ridden a bike before, but the kids had an awesome time and nobody got hurt. So that was the best part about it. All right, and so some other updates that I don't have any pictures for, we continue to support our PE department um, and provide professional development through UC Cooperative Extension in San Mateo County. We held two COVID and flu, uh, vaccine clinics in November, December of last year. And we had about over five hundred people attend. I don't have the exact numbers because due to staffing changes in the county, I was unable to get that data. Here in our district, we distributed over fifty thousand COVID tests. I'm so tired of looking at COVID tests, but we still have them available, uh, specifically to staff through December per Cal OSHA. So we will continue to provide it, and also when students are sick at school, we always still offer a COVID test if the parents want to take them. And then also part of, uh, my job is that I have an opportunity to collaborate with a lot of other departments, Child and Nutrition, Student Services, as well as with, um, the, the community partners. So, um, I enjoy just working in collaboration with everybody else. So some of my goals for this year, um, one has already occurred, and that is the, um, CPR class that was offered to RCTA. RCTA union members, and it was funded by RCTA and the district. And we had about forty-four people that participated in that event. And then last year, I didn't, um, have this on here, last year we had over seventy-five CSEA members participate in CPR classes that was, uh, funded by a grant, um, through our safety committee. And we're looking to possibly offer more classes to CSEA depending on the amount that's left in that grant. And then also, my big push is decreasing the amount of students that are behind on immunizations. And so we want to make sure that students are having access to clinics, um, access to getting immunized, uh, specifically for some of our students that are new to the country. So I've been working with some collaborating clinics to make that happen, and I'm hoping to host some clinics within the district. So that way it will limit the access issue some of our families are having with getting, um, immunizations. And then also on the to-do list is a well-being center, and more information will, um, come with that as it starts to evolve. And so my next slide, I'll talk about the last three goals. So I want to continue my collaboration with partners. Um, I spearhead the Health and Wellness Committee, which will be starting up again this month. And so these are a number of community partners that are funded through the Sequoia Healthcare District, but also they just choose to, um, support our district, and they are funded through other means. And so PE Plus is one of our big, biggest ones where, uh, they do the coaching for our students, kinder through fifth grade for a majority of our schools. And we have other organizations, so definitely that partnership will show up in our health and wellness meetings this year where, um, you'll see the work that they're doing, and also we can count on their support whenever we identify a need, um, for our students. Another goal is through the TOPE Program, which is, um, through the San Mateo County Office of Ed. And so as we see an increasing concern about tobacco and cannabis use on, uh, campus, we want to try to curb that by providing preventative education for our students and awareness. And so we will have at particular sites, a curriculum being taught by some of our site leads. Uh, we will be administering the California Healthy Kids Survey to see where we're at as far as drug use in our district, as well as, um, our students' feelings about drug use and their perception on drug use. We are creating peer mentor groups, and then our first activity that you will actually start to see the work is, uh, during Red Ribbon Week at the end of October. And then finally, um, is our collaboration with our parents, and, um, our parent education series will continue with the Parent Venture. And as you can see, there's already some topics, uh, the new, uh, topic that is, is, um, really hot for parents right now is fentanyl. And so, um, that is coming up within the next couple of months. And a lot of these topics, they are, um, it's information that we gather from our school that they seen was a need that needed to be addressed. And so I brought that to the attention of Parent Venture, and so they got those classes together. I just recently sent out a survey yesterday to parents, because I also wanted to offer classes to meet parent needs and offer in-person classes as well as additional online classes. And so as of now, since the last twenty-four hours, I have over a hundred parents that have responded. And the top three classes, um, that they're requesting at this moment is How to Help My Child Academically. They want to know more about mental health, and they also want to know about internet safety, so we'll be looking at gearing up and, um, um, working with our community partners on delivering those classes. Well, that's it for me, and my job for this year and my job for last year, but I definitely continue to enjoy working here in this district and the role that I play in the collaboration that I have with all of you, as well as my other colleagues. But you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you, Patrina, for your presentation. Um, I love hearing, um, how much you enjoy your job too, so that's really fun. Um, Board, you wanna, anybody have questions or comments?
Thanks, uh, just to echo the comments here, it's really amazing, all the different things that you're doing for, for our kids and all the different ways that, uh, that we're taking care of them. Um, I already chimed in a little bit with, you know, my, my thoughts on, um, actually applying sealant and/or fluoride. Um, I, I was able to pull up some resources, I'd love to sync with you after on that.
Yes.
Um, so cool that you're, um, teaching the teachers as well, uh, in terms of, uh, offering them the CPR class, for instance.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm just curious, like, uh, if we could, uh, look at expanding some of the great selection of classes that you're offering the parents to include, like, first aid, um, whether that might make sense, maybe not, but just like wanted to kind of throw it out there, because you already have a parent education program if that can end up helping take care of our kids if they're better equipped to deal with, uh, first aid scenarios. Um, but just, just a suggestion, one wonderful, uh, presentation, wonderful to see how you're taking care of our community, thank you so much.
Thank you, I will add that on the list. I know that what's important is trying to find classes that are accessible, that are of low cost to some of our families, so I could definitely look into researching what might be a resource for our pa- for our parents.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much, I really enjoyed, uh, your presentation, and I enjoy being on the Wellness Committee, and I see your passion. Uh, I guess on that committee and also the Safe Routes to Schools Committee, so seeing in both those arenas. Yeah, thank you, it's, it's really nice to kind of see the collective of what you're working on and all of that. I was really I was really happy to hear particularly at the end about engaging parents. I mean, we talked a little bit about this, I think, just at our last meeting in another arena, but just how important, you know, school and education is. But then what happens in the home and how we can support the continued learning and just support of our kids. And particularly when you mentioned academics, mental health and internet safety, like how important is that? So as much as we can do that, you know, teachers supporting parents or outside providers supporting them or others, all the better. I think we'll see huge benefits there. And then I was really happy to see your focus last year on the wellness for our staff because we've also talked about that, that you can only be as good to others as you are well yourself, you know? And so it's important that we all take care of ourselves, number one, and then we're able to give, number two. So I hope that we can continue with that messaging in all that we do. I know that one of the things that came up in our weekly meeting with Dr. Baker this week is just, you know, we're asking our teachers and staff to do a lot. There's a lot of new changes this year. And, you know, we came out of COVID where there was a lot. We just, we continue to ask a lot of everyone. And so one of the things that we talked about is that we all just need to give a little grace and, you know, ask people to do the best they can, but also ask people not to get too stressed out. And if they are getting stressed out, you know, talk to their principal or whomever because we obviously, you know, need to kind of be there the next day and the next day and throughout the school year. So anyway, I really appreciate you kind of keeping that big picture on wellness with, you know, students, parents, staff and everybody. So thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, what incredible impact. Just looking at the numbers from the screenings alone and just how transformative it must be for those students that are identified and can get the support from the, you know, from the hearing, the dental and the vision screening. And particularly the partnership with Vision to Learn to actually go all the way to providing glasses. Like for so many of our families that are school dependent, it's just like, how transformative can that be to go from, I can't really see to I can see or I can't hear. Actually, one question I did have though is on the hearing part. I know we can only refer them to the family, but are they also provided with like guidance of how they can go, what, what, what the next step should be?
Yeah. So for the hearing, they are referred to, you know, whether it be their insurance or maybe a service that is at low cost. And our nurses will typically be the ones to collaborate. One of the things I'm hoping to do this year is work closer with our community schools just to make sure that the follow-up is done. So not only are they referred, but did they actually follow up and get the support that they're needed? So that's another goal that wasn't on the paper.
Great. Well, thank you to you and your nursing team and the B C B As for all the work that they're doing for the, you know, the health and wellness of our students, focusing on staff, really, really. I remember you talking about that last year. Really neat to see that there. And then mental health. I know that, you know, we've often talked about how much of a priority that is. I was telling Dr. Baker that I had gone back and reread the Stanford study from the year one. And their first strategic opportunity for us was to secure funding beyond June 2023. So glad that we're able to do that and to see what's coming, you know, this year and able to offer that support. I'm grateful to Sequoia Healthcare District for their additional funding that they can provide us, our partners with One Life Counseling and, and of course, our ability to be able to find funding from the LCAP, thanks to now Anna and Rick and previously Liz. I just think that it's just so important. I think that, you know, I know that we can't, we're still not meeting all the needs that everybody has there, but I'm glad at least we're able to continue that program, at least at the levels that they were there before. So yeah, this is just wonderful to see. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you again for everything that you do. I think there's just an incredible amount of support being offered to our staff and our students and our families. And of course, there's always more that we wish we could do. I think that the follow-up that Mike was talking about is really important. If we can do that, especially with the hearing and the dental. The Vision to Learn makes it super easy by providing the glasses for them. You know, I can speak just from personal experience, how important the glasses are in the classroom. I, I didn't know until I was screened in sixth grade that I couldn't see the board. And I was sitting in the back of the classroom. And so Roy Cloud told my parents, hey, this girl needs glasses. And it turned out I really couldn't see anything. What was I gonna say? I'm really excited about the Wellbeing Center and seeing how that comes together. So, yeah. Dr. Baker, do you want to add anything?
Well, about the Wellbeing Center, Rick, the money hasn't come in yet, has it? So we are still on hold. I know, and I know we've met with not only Michelle, but also Stanford has been at the table with us, Kristin Geiser. And so we're, and of course, Anna Paula plays a, a big piece in this with us, along with Dr. Josie, who is very anxious to see how we do and get this off the ground and what support he can provide. I don't know what is happening. It should have been here by now. They keep telling us, wait a few weeks, wait a few weeks. But we will, it's definitely in the planning and we have things to do. Once we have those dollars, I'm not going to start spending until we get it. So hopefully within the next couple of weeks. And I know Anna Paula meets with the county, not the County Office of Ed, but with the County of San Mateo on a regular basis. Keep pushing and asking questions. What's the delay? What's the delay? So once that comes to fruition, I'll definitely let you know. And where we are and where we're, and when we're starting. But Patrina, you've done an excellent job. As I said previously, when we started, I am so pleased and enthused that you are working with us. You're an outstanding staff member who collaborates with all of us, brings your ideas to the table. You think out of the box. And so we are so fortunate to have you. Our previous experience was not one that I was happy with. And I know Pamela, who is now the CEO, Pamela Christman, has been very supportive in the direction that we have gone and very supportive with all the work you have accomplished also. So thank you so much for helping us with all our students and staff here in the Redwood City School District. Great job.
Thank you.
I just realized too, Cecilia, if you wanted to make any comments, you can do that. Do you want to, I don't know if you want.
Thank you. And again, I was actually typing an email because I figure if I wasn't gonna comment, I wanted to for sure thank Patrina for everything. And as Janet said, it's incredible to know that you started by saying that you love your job. And so that's always good because the more you love it, the more stuff you do. And so it is very appreciated that everything you and the nurses do for our kids. So I won't comment any longer because everybody, you know, made those same comments. So just know that you are and the team appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrina. All right, perfect. Okay, awesome. Okay, so that leads us to 6.2, review of HR Department's vision and plans for 2324.
Yes, and we now have our outstanding HR department that is headed and spearheaded by Wendy Kelly. And they are going to give you the overview of what has taken place over not only the last school year, but what is taking place now. And we have the wonderful personnel that works in HR with us. And I will let, Erin, are you introducing or is Wendy introducing? Okay, so I'll let Wendy introduce the staff that works very closely with her and with a lot of us.
And while we're just getting set up for two seconds, we have some fun cookies we have for everyone for tonight with the strong, exciting messages that we expect our students and our staff to live by. So as I, we pass them around, I want you to just take a look at them. Please take one, of course. And we hope you enjoy. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, we'll jump right in. Well, I have to say, it is so difficult to follow Patrina. She's such an amazing resource and the joy that she expresses in her job is something that we just really want to honor and clone. And hopefully, you know, everyone in our district really feels that way when they come to work and, and it shows on their face. So tonight, it's very apropos to start off with the Human Resources update to the board. We're so excited to bring this to you tonight because we have a lot of joy in our job. We have a lot of tough moments, but one thing that's so nice is when people come in the door, they're usually at their high or sometimes at their low. And so our job is to support our staff and our visitors to our district with the, the support that they need one way or another. And so we have a great group that really helps with that process. So tonight, we want to really talk about the vision of our department, which includes a variety of different things in the support to our employees and our, and our new hires. And it starts really with the recruitment and the development of our staff so that we eventually retain our employees to stay with us for quite some time. And there are some shifts in the way that these new generations are coming into the workforce and how they approach work that will require us to adapt in our profession. But we're still learning about that and we'll be putting practices in place to support that. But really what the goal is to choose dynamic people who are well qualified, who really support the mission and vision of our district and honestly love children. That has become really one of our interview questions. And that might seem very basic, but it makes such a difference when people get up every day and come to work to do the, the things that they do with children, whether they're cutting the grass and they engage with kids, whether they're in the classroom, the cafeteria, the office, et cetera, or certainly in the classroom. And so that is why we're here tonight is to talk about the different aspects in human resources. And really, we will be focusing on recruitment. That has been a main topic over the last year. And so we have included quite a bit of data tonight. But before we jump in, we really want to honor our dynamic HR team. We have three of the four members tonight, our newest addition, Elizabeth, on the far left in this picture, could not join. But I would love to have the three lovely women here come stand next to me. I know, don't be shy. And we just want to introduce them and, and thank them. They're here to support the presentation, of course, every day to support the work. So Elizabeth Martinez Alvarez, who couldn't join us tonight, is our newest addition, is our administrative assistant. What a joy she brings every day to the office. She's helping with board policies and she's assisting with interviews. As you know, we had a large number of new hires, so the whole process and, and other tasks in our office. So she's been quite remarkable. We have Griselda Santa Maria here, our Senior Credential Analyst. And Griselda's been in HR longer than me, I think now 11 years from my memory. Oh my goodness, 10 years now. So it's just remarkable. She has processed all the credentials, paperwork. I think when an employee walks through the door, there must be at least 15 steps for that employee just on Griselda's desk. So just, it's remarkable. And the relationship she has with our county to get things through quickly has been built over time. So she has quite a reputation to help with, you know, when I come to her and say, can we do this? Can we do that? And I always wait for the green light for Griselda. So congrats to Griselda. And then Erin's gonna introduce our other staff.
So next in the picture and next to me tonight is Gabby Robles. She is our Personnel Specialist and our Substitute Extraordinaire superhero. She is the first one in our department every morning, checking frontline to see what the substitute needs are at every site well before the school day starts. She forms great relationships with our subs and our sites and really helps principals problem solve the day-to-day absences that happen. She also supports our school sites by processing and clearing our volunteers. We know our school sites rely heavily on volunteers for different functions. And so Gabby processes all of those applications to make sure that the people on site working with our kiddos have all of the appropriate clearance. She also processes leaves for employees. And so those can be moments where people have an exciting reason for a leave, potentially a baby gone the way, or they have a medical need. And Gabby has extraordinary grace and helps people through those times very wonderfully. The last person in our picture is our Senior Personnel Specialist, Jennifer Sandoval. Jennifer has the task of maintaining our employee database. And that task is a monster in itself. Every single move an employee makes, whether it be a literal move, an address change, a name change, grade level change, anything, Gabby or Jennifer is tracking in the system. And she communicates heavily with the business department because every entry she makes has a direct result on an employee paycheck. So she spends a lot of our time processing for all thousand, well, all 900 employees. And she also tracks our 100 contractors that work in our district. So our team of four supports all 1,000 people who work with our students. So we want to thank them because they are really the backbone of our department.
Okay, thank you for that. Just a quick moment for acknowledgements. And I think Erin was a little too kind. The lovely Erin Caicos, our Director of Human Resources. She really works very closely with, with Jennifer, certainly with the database management. But she is the point person for position changes. She's assisting with negotiation. She has really built a great relationship with C S E A. And she's the point person for Classified, while I've been spearheading Certificated. So that's how we've divided our work. So we're really thrilled to have Erin, of course, on the team. I think we're on year three now. So it's great. So anyways, we dive right in to talk about the 934 employees, 100 contractors and 146 substitutes plus hundreds of volunteers. It's really amazing to see the support and the gifts that people are bringing to our district to work with our kids. So last year, as you recall, I came to you for the HR update at the time and really discussed an urgent concern of staffing. And while it is not anything new that we have a staffing shortage, certainly on the peninsula, but the California and really in the nation, we just couldn't continue in this manner. So tonight's focus is really about how we reacted and made changes to the concerns at hand, certainly with recruitment and now retention, but, and we'll go through data accordingly. But before we do that, I do want to also highlight the other key work of human resources. Because as the hiring seasons flow throughout the year, Certificated tends to be February 1st through August, but Classified is all year round. There are other items that happen, as you know, union negotiations. We've appreciated the support from the board, other trainings and support for the employees, certainly our new management that have come in this year. And then all of the legal aspects of human resources that were consistently being updated and attending workshops on. So that's all to make sure that we are doing the right thing for our employees and of course, following laws and so forth. So just wanted to make a note of that. So along with the, the work, of course, we are working side by side with our board policy that was adopted a few years ago and really taking a hard look last year on our interview process from start to finish, how our questions were formed. Were they aligned with, you know, an equity conscious model? Were we looking at, looking at our testing for our classified employees? Was it appropriate? And so we took some deep dives in those areas, transferred job descriptions. There was quite a, a lot of preparation work and revamping that we, we did in order to really support this board policy. And in doing so, within our equity goals, that of course are in the ARs, is looking at how we're reaching our employees. And so traditionally, for years and years and years, vacancies have been posted on what's called EdJoin. It's a platform in California where if you're interested in education, you would set up an account and you would apply. And that's for all the districts. And that was fine, except that, that it was difficult. And that was fine, except that, that it was difficult to find people outside of the, of California, certainly. And, and the same people were vying for the same pool of candidates. So we really wanted to ensure that we reached out more for our social media presence. Also, looking at the generations coming into the workforce in large numbers, it's just a different way of applying for a job. You know, EdJoin can be complicated and difficult and we were using it for certificated and classified staff. We wanted it to be easy, accessible, could be done on your phone and so forth. So we, we moved into that arena. So those were some of the, the focus that we did in regards to equity. And then really making sure that we were choosing candidates that fit the criteria as outlined. And that had a lot to do with the, the big shift in the interview questioning and the, and the processes of interviewing. We did try out one-way video conferencing for our interviews. And it kind of, and Jennifer, of course, is our recruitment point person. It started off with a bang and then it sort of fizzled. And it was really interesting because what we were finding is that people applied. We would send them the link to perform their one-way interview. So they would record themselves with the questions that were prompted and, and then send it in. But they would go through the process and then not do the interview. So we're waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting. So it was almost a different type of stress. So we actually changed our format and said, how do you want to interview? Phone, one-way, in person, you know, there's a list. And they would check and then we would respond accordingly. So, you know, we learned a lot in this process. It was fun. It was a challenge to really transform this work. And so I do want to thank my team because there were so many days I'd be like, all right, remember I told you we were gonna have bumps? Here's a bump, let's get going. So they rolled up their sleeves to, to ebb and flow and, and shift as needed. So that was great. So as I mentioned to you, we had, and looking back for next year, quite a few things that we focused on as, as we noted here. Aside from our big recruitment efforts and our shifts, we still had to maintain trainings and add because part of our equity goals, certainly with classified staff, was to increase the work in equity conscious type trainings and certainly customer service. I know it's been a big focus for Erin as well, and she'll speak to that in a little bit. The other big change for the 2324, as, as we planned for it, was the, it was Dr. Baker and the board's permission to hire the guest teachers. And guest teachers are substitutes that commit to work to, at one site every day to manage coverage for IEP, SST 504 meetings, to manage when a sub is not available in the traditional format, to pull small reading groups if everyone's copacetic. So that was a really great solution to a big problem last year of not having enough substitutes that would commit to daily needs of just typical staff absences and administrators needing to fill in or, or other, or other teachers or so forth. So that has proven to be very successful, certainly in the start of the school year. So as we now take a little bit more of a deep dive in recruitment, our target is 100% fill rate. So when we have a vacancy, we need to fill it. And so for certificated, we filled at 98% by September 1st. For classified, 90% by September 1st and 100% for management, except we now have one in special ed. But in general, we really did a, I think, a fantastic job with my team who worked countless hours in wanting to make sure that every classroom was filled and the needs set out by the board through the SIPSAs and through the LCAP were put into fruition, the seam teachers, music, et cetera. So we, we feel very comfortable and confident that we did far better than we did last year. And, and that feels really good to have students in front of kids. The hard part is that then it shifts over to the development of these individuals, whether it's our classified staff, our certificated staff. And that's heavy lifting when 30% of the individuals working with us are new. So that's a large ask and a large lift of our management and others that support the development of our staff within departments. So looking at who we have and just, and some historical pieces here. As you can see on the left-hand side, these are, we took a five-year data point for general ed teachers. So these are student teachers, teachers in the classroom. And you can note how they're essentially stable. There aren't major changes in our FTE counts. We have decreased a little bit over time, but not by large numbers. It's essentially about 13 FTE over a three-year period. Our special ed classrooms, including contractors, and we don't have very many in special ed classrooms because one of our goals was to decrease them. However, we do have an increase you can see this year because of new classrooms added that into the budget for this, this school year. And so that did show the uptick of special ed in this graph in yellow. But I want to point out also with student enrollment, we all know we're in declining enrollment. So it is concerning that our counts have remained relatively stable based on our declining enrollment over time. So this, this chart is really to just open up some data for future conversations. Part of our equity goals is to look at equity, excuse me, ethnicity data. So we did a point, we just took a little dipstick in time between 2018 and 2023 in terms of the different ethnicities of our staff, noting that our white certificated staff has declined quite a bit since 2018. But our, our classified staff actually mirror our student count quite lovely. So this is a new slide we just put in. So Evelyn will be uploading this for the public. But I did want to point out that there are some slight changes in our certificated data. All our classified remains pretty stable and mirrors our students. We do have an increase in 2023 of our Asian ethnicity. And part of that has to do with the hiring of our international teachers. We also want to note, this is, I mentioned this earlier, the different age groups between 2018 to 2023. And you can see the shifts and changes as our groups are, are aging essentially in our district. But what's interesting to me, working in human resources, is anticipating retirement rates coming forward and also looking at how we communicate, solicit, recruit generations coming up and all that that entails. So we have been diving into some of that research and a lot of it has to do with social media. But I think we're just scratching the surface of where we can go. I think education notoriously follows other industries. So we're really watching closely how we can improve and how we keep people happy in the age groups that they're in and the different life cycles that they're in, in these time periods. So with all of that and the analysis of, of, of who we are as a district, we really sort of looked up and said, how are we getting the people that we want to work here? And it's concerning to see that there is a 20 to 30% decline of teachers entering credential programs because that means our pool in California specifically, this is the date in California, is, is, is just continuously decreasing. And with 55 public schools in these various counties that are noted here and nine approved credentialing programs, it was really startling for us to just know that we have to look elsewhere. And that's the shifts that we, that we decided to do. Because for the last few years, we've been doing the same thing. And I know I sat in John's office one day and said, we just can't do this. Can't just keep doing this. Because we are starting school with vacancies and that's really not good for anybody. So this is, this is some of the research that really drove the work that we, that we shifted to this year. And we realized it was time for a change. We still want to make sure that we are recruiting people that embody these traits. We have found that really fits in with the mission and vision and the goals of our district. And so we continue to do that through our processes. And part of that is recruitment fairs. Now, what's interesting about the recruitment fairs is we expanded them greatly. I think Jennifer now has this show on the road that she, that she, she wheels out of our office with posters and this and, and what you can see here, look at. And Griselda helped her with various ones. And while it's interesting and, and beneficial to meet people, to see, to hear people's stories and so forth, we were not garnering the applicants that we so desired, certainly not for certificated. And even with our classified jobs fairs, you know, it'd be one person that may be committed to. It just wasn't giving us the outreach. What really is giving us the outreach is our social media platform. So first and foremost, the word-of-mouth referral is number one in our district, for sure. Absolutely. Number one by a mile. The next one is LinkedIn and Google Jobs. EdJoin is way down on the list now. It's good, we still have a link, but that's really not our main source anymore. In fact, sometimes I'm like, oh, that's right, we have to, we have to advertise on EdJoin, which was very different than a year ago. So while we will still have a presence at recruitment fairs, we're really looking at the viability of that. We're gonna go one more year and do another big run. But I think we're gonna have to look at that a little bit differently. So, but we thank Jennifer for all of her hard work and, and Griselda for joining too. So one of the items that, in, in our efforts to really, to really shift things is to look at what we already have in place and how can we enhance it? So our residency programs, you're familiar with San Jose State for our bilingual programs. Erin really worked hard on the Alder Special Ed residency program, which was great. We, we hired two people this year. So we're growing those programs. But I think one of the ways that really saved us this year for, for our 98% fill rate, certainly for certificated, was our recruitment from international countries. We set up and learned from Samantail Foster City, actually, who started it in January, and I could kick myself for not starting it in January. We, we did so in April. And the, we hired a company to help with cultural transitions and trainings because it's different to teach in the United States, certainly maybe even in California than it is abroad. And they have been wonderful. They started training as soon as commitments were made in July, August, and then certainly are, are continuing this year. And then we also worked with individuals to assist with housing because we knew that we couldn't take that on. We're just not in the relocation business. And so we had great support for the housing as well. So these are the countries represented. It was wonderful to pick them up from the airport, or not from the airport, from their apartments, to drive them, to have them fingerprint, go through social security and hear their stories. And I have to say, every single person we have met has been so positive. And the joy of teaching and working with kids just comes out in their excitement when they talk about their work. And so I'm, I would like to continue forth with this relationship. It's new and so we'll see how this year goes. But it's a three to five-year commitment for teachers and then 18-month for paraeducators. So it's quite remarkable that we have filled all of our paraeducators this year, certainly with international teachers and paraeducators. There have been some bumps, we've learned, in this process. And I think some of that would be remedied by starting a lot earlier, just getting people settled, making sure they have what they need, transportation. We were doing these quick trainings and so forth on navigating the bus routes and so forth. But in general, I think, all things considered, it was as smooth as it could be. So one of the snapshots I took from our recruitment platform, it's called Team Taylor, but no one would ever know that it's not advertised anywhere, but that's the name of the platform, is we get to analyze all kinds of data. This one's interesting because we're tracking since we launched on December 5th, even though we, interestingly enough, didn't have too many postings at that point. But where, when visitors come to our career-specific website. So we can appropriate our staff and say, okay, we're heading into March. Let's make sure we have, you know, you clear your desk a little bit. We can ebb and flow. Griselda can sort of get her coffee up in the morning and get going with all of her credentialing aspects as we, as we hire, interview, et cetera. And so we look at this different analytics to ensure that we are appropriating staff, certainly having our managers clear their calendars for interviewing and so forth. So on this particular day, March 27th, there were 1,424 visits. But you can see that was sort of the highlight of what we defined to be the certificated hiring season. But please note, this is for all, all applicants, management and classified. And then on the right-hand side, overall, 29,000 visits warranted over 1,000 applications, which is still a 4% conversion rate, meaning we hired when it was all said and done, 4%. So that's something we're also looking at and diving in now that our hiring season has sort of come to a close, certainly for certificated and management. Because we're gonna put some energy into looking at, making sure that all of our internal processes are appropriate to, to analyze that data and make sure it's accurate. I think in, one of our bumps along the way is we may not have noted hire for one of our applicants. And so then that data isn't captured. So we have to just clean up a few things. So moving forward then, from a comparison from last year, which is where we had some concerns. On the left-hand side, it notes people in these classifications that have separated from the district. So the green bars are from 2018 to 2023. So we are seeing a decline in, in certificated staff that are separating from the district from that year, just in one point in time. And then you'll see classified, we have an increase. And then management has been relatively stable. Some people have shifted in positions and we've hired more, but in general. And then on the right-hand side, we just captured our new hires from last year to this year. And so you can see just the volume of people that have entered our district. So overall, it is 70 new employees, new bodies. Because in HR, we look at positions and we look at people. So 70 new people overall. Of course, it doesn't include contractors, substitutes and so forth. So diving a little bit deeper, and certainly as we look ahead for this year and discussions about staff, this is a chart that notes over the last several years, how many people are in these positions. And so you can, you can see, you know, our uptick for special ed and so forth. But other, other categories have essentially remained pretty stable. We have had fluctuations in our emergency credentials. Emergency credentials, as you recall, are individuals that have a bachelor's and have content background. And so are able to obtain an emergency credential from the state of California, but they do not have a teaching credential. And then also interns are enrolled in a teaching credential program, so not yet fully credentialed. And what's interesting about these groups of, of individuals is that they do require more support because they haven't either completed or started a program. And so the district pays for a mentor to support the, the teacher through the ebbs and flows of the year and so forth. All right, I'll switch gears and have Erin take over to talk about classified.
Wendy, real quick, before you move on, I know all the chance for questions, but just as, can I get a clarification on one of the slides? Slide 18, so I think the one right before this, yeah, that one. So you mentioned that 70 new bodies, but it looks like we had a lot more new hires than that. So I don't know, what, what's the 70 new bodies?
Right, 70 new people joined us overall this year from last year. So we still had resignations and retirements that made that number much larger than 70. But when everyone transferred, people left, people came in, there were 70 new people that joined the district overall. In terms, in terms of positions.
Okay, yes, I, I can talk to you offline. So somehow that the chart on the right doesn't reflect that to me. Are you do agree? So I, I think I'm missing something. Because actually, when I saw this, Cause actually when I saw this initially in the package, I was like, whoa, we're just like hundreds of new people, right? But what you're saying is out of our 900 employees, it's really only 70 new individuals?
70 new positions came into the district. So between STEAM and music and the special ed, the paras. So
But did we hire more than 70 individuals?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so.
70 new, 70 new positions to our district than what we experienced last year.
I think the total number of employees.
Is accurate here.
23, 24 is 70 higher than the total in 22, 23. So take the 864 and you have to take away the resignations and retirements.
Okay.
And we filled those and then surpassed that by 70 people.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. I mean, because what this really shows, particularly the, the chart on the right is, you know, in the last two years, we have a lot of new employees. So out of 900 employees, the percentage then is about a third.
Yeah.
Oh, you had said that earlier. Okay. That's why there was a lot of numbers going around. I got confused on the 70. So now I'm, I'm cleared up. Thank you.
It's always fun when we have one meeting to present. We're like, here's everything.
No, that's fine. This is great. I love data. I just got a little confused.
No, it is a lot. Thank you for questioning.
Okay, thank you.
No, no problem.
For our classified positions, we have a couple notable, um, items on this spreadsheet. You'll see in facilities, we decreased five positions and those were the, um, holdover day custodians that were brought forth and instituted when we returned from the pandemic. So through the layoff process last year, the day custodians that were really in charge of cleaning surfaces and making sure bathrooms were sanitized regularly, those positions came away. So there's a decrease in facilities. Our para educators, we increased 12 people. Um, our positions are almost fully staffed there. But we have seen an increase there this year, which is notable. Most of those increases come from our international paras that we will, um, touch upon later. And we saw a slight increase in our bilingual IAs. So these are either bilingual instructional assistants or newcomer instructional assistants that are supporting our multilingual learners on sites and in classrooms, either pushing into classrooms or supporting them in small groups. This slide is, is what I am proud of. It is our para educator staffing for our special education students. We, from January 2023 till now, have hired 53 district para educators. We brought 31 international para educators from various countries abroad. And we are still awaiting the arrival of our last four. We, um, are experiencing, as Wendy said, some learning curves. And so we can't control when embassy dates are set in other countries. But we are almost, um, we almost have welcomed everyone here. The pie chart on the left shows the vacancies within the para educator sped classification from August of 2022. We started the school year last year with a quarter of our positions vacant. That doesn't mean our students weren't being served. We were using contractors. So the special ed department, um, establishes contracts with, with staffing agencies, and we're using contracted paras for that in August of 22. This year, we started school with only a 2% vacancy rate, which is amazing. That was really only three positions that we did not have, um, somebody for. So that decrease is great. Our international paras stay with us for a year. So we're already thinking about and anticipating and starting the conversations with special education to try to project for next year and plan appropriately so that we can have everyone here when school starts, because I want a fully green circle next year. For our management positions, they remain relatively stable. The one increase that you will see is the, on the bottom row, the community school programs. That department recently received a grant which enables, which enabled more positions in the management realm for them. And that allows them to keep going with the work that they're doing to support sites and go deeper in supporting our students and our families. Last year, we experienced, um, uh, an emergency with substitutes. We know that absences happen daily for staff. But we also know the strain that puts on a site or a department when there is an absence and there is no substitute to cover that. So the team really rolled up our sleeves and took this on. And Wendy mentioned as the board and Dr. Baker approving the 12 guest teachers was certainly a relief. But we also, Gabby, um, partners with Swing Education. They are an agency, almost like a staffing agency, but what they're providing are day-to-day substitutes. So they provide certificated and classified substitutes. So if we know we have a high needs absence and we know in advance, Gabby can enter that into Swing. And then one of their substitutes can pick it up. We also, um, find a lot of our classified substitutes through them because we don't, we, we don't have many classified substitutes because people who are seeking classified work are seeking stable work and day-to-day is hard. Um, so we use Swing for classified quite a bit. This year, we have welcomed 26, so far this year, we've welcomed 26 new certificated subs. And throughout all of last year, we only welcomed 21. So we've already surpassed our goal from last year and we're continuing to grow. We think that a lot of that increases due to the platforms that we're advertising on now, being LinkedIn and Google Jobs.
With all of the 30% of new people, um, here in our district, it's really imperative that we consistently work on retention. Because as difficult as it is to find a new hire, we really want the consistency of a trained person. Redwood City is known for their trainings of their staff, but it's very difficult. When my HR colleagues say to me, thank you so much for giving us a well-trained employee. I just am cringing when I hear that. Because I know we do a really good job, um, but we need to keep the individuals in our, in our district. And, you know, research says it has to do with salaries, which we've done an excellent job with, relationships with supervisors and colleagues, and really work environment for staff specifically. So those, that is the focus. We, we really are working on a transfer program between HR and management, which has always been in place, but needs to get tightened up in terms of the handoff of an employee and their next steps in outlining their training schedules. Just really for communication and transparency and scheduling for that employee. We've already started that with classified staff and I know Anna Herrera has been amazing to work with in terms of the certificated staff and really ensuring the heavy lift, especially in August for not only our new teachers, our emergency credentials and our international staff in terms of, uh, transition. But there's some work to do there. So that's, that's on our plan for the horizon. So ensuring that we keep people, these are the things we have in place. Certainly recognitions, fun events. Uh, we just had a fun activity here in the district office the other day, but certainly district-wide, the welcome back event, which thank you so much, board for attending the recognitions that we do. Um, and certainly the raises that I, as I had mentioned. But the professional growth of our, of all of our staff is really critical. It's what keeps, another reason to keep, um, people fresh and new and what they're doing. And so ensuring that for all of our classifications and groups, we have training set aside, whether you're, uh, the groundskeeper and office staff, um, or, or, or management. So those are all the things that we have in place right now. So our goals as we conclude, uh, moving forward is the onboarding support I had just mentioned. Uh, continuing our work with classified training on equity. We've spent a lot of time with our certificated staff. And Aaron did work last year with various groups, but there's more work to be done as well. We have Elizabeth, who is going to be transforming our HR department, moving into the 21st century for our electronic personnel file. So that's new. And then, uh, personnel management trainings, how to really strengthen the relationships with the employees as one of the factors for retention. So that concludes our presentation for the evening and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Um, board, do you wanna, who would like to go first?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Wendy and Aaron for presenting, um, Griselda, Gabby, Jennifer. Thank you so much for the work that you do and for coming here tonight to be part of the presentation. Really appreciate you, um, being, being part of it. Um, it's always, you know, great to see names and faces put together, um, as part of these presentations. Great job, I mean, filling this. I, I just remember the stress and struggle of, uh, what we were looking at for recruitment last year. It's really impressive to see, um, the outcomes this year and, um, you know, great job on, um, looking at, you know, kind of new, new and different ways of not just recruiting, but actually where, where to find teachers, um, and also, you know, just taking advantage of, uh, you know, different novel opportunities that came our way. Yeah, sure. We're going to be learning and figuring out how to do it, but hopefully we're setting the groundwork to be able to, you know, continue, um, having successes in recruiting and retaining, um, qualified teachers and supporting nearly a thousand staff, um, that you do every day on top of the recruiting that you have to do. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Nice to have all of you here tonight. Uh, thank you that, for all that you do. Really appreciate it. I feel like I have a much better idea about what each person is, is working on. So, um, yeah, you do a lot. I mean, if you think about 900 employees and there's sort of the six of you total, I guess, right? The four and two. So thank you. Um, you know, the one thought I had, and I had a, I guess, a question you were mentioning on recruitment. Uh, word of mouth is one of our best ways of, uh, hiring employees. Have we thought about doing some kind of bonus structure? Okay. Um, because I will say a nonprofit I'm involved with, uh, we did that this summer with our lifeguards. And so the lifeguards were finding other lifeguards and it worked out really well. So anyway, I'm glad. So go ahead and, yeah.
So we do, we, we did use that last year. Um, it was a nominal amount.
Yeah.
Uh, so that could be a factor. We, we didn't, we had about seven referrals. Um, in, in regards to ones that participated in this specific program where we said,
Right.
Give us the name of the person. And that, it was very formal.
Right. I mean, it'd be the person and we hire them.
Yes, exactly.
But anyway, just.
But yes, I, I would agree with you. That might be something for us to entertain in terms of delving into that pathway more deeply than we, than we have in the past, for sure. That's a great idea.
Anyway, so just, uh,
Thank you.
Comment. And then everything else, I was very pleased to hear what I, um, heard. And then just to reiterate, you know, how much work there is just in onboarding and training and all of that, so many new employees. So it's, it's a lot for, for you as the HR team, for all of our principals and managers out there who are bringing on new people. So I just really, you know, shout out to people in the audience and others. I mean, I really appreciate all the work that does happen. And I, I feel like we're a very welcoming district and I hope that our, uh, new people feel welcome.
I agree. I think what is really nice to see is when you have colleagues assisting each other. You know, there's a few pictures in there. We had the custodians working on something out front and I said, come on, let's take your picture. But they had already been, they were chatting and showing each other things to the mentors with our teachers that step up or just, just help with the, um, helping transition new folks to our managers, helping each other. So it's really nice to see the teamwork that we all step up to do every day in our district. It really makes a difference. And I have to say, one of the, the nicest things I also hear are compliments from the board to, from the board to employees when they go out. They're like, that's what they just said, you know? It's just, it brings a smile. So anyway, it's, it's really nice to be in an environment and work like that.
Thank you for the work you all do. We can't educate our kids without teachers and we can't hire teachers without HR. So it's a pretty direct line to, uh, our school district being able to perform its function. And just wonderful to be able to see, uh, Pac-Man winning the video game. They, you know, greens, the green circles filling up. So it's, uh, really, really wonderful to, uh, to see that. So thank you. You stole my idea. So I was gonna comment like, how about referrals? Um, one, one fun thing to think about, uh, is that random rewards can also be, uh, highly motivating. And so for every person who comes across as referred, either because you referred them or when they joined, they indicate that they joined because of you. Uh, you get, you get a raffle ticket. And then if you win the raffle, there'll be a big party for you and your other teachers, right? So sometimes like your bang for the buck can actually end up much higher than just like handing cash out. So just fun, fun thought.
That's a great idea. That sounds like a lot of fun too.
You won the referral lottery. Congratulations.
Well, everyone signs up for a raffle. Everyone wants to be in the raffle, you know?
Totally, totally.
We can increase the numbers. Good idea.
And then that increases the awareness, because like, oh, I went to this party. I didn't even realize you could go and win, win a party. Yeah. Anyhow, uh, still a fun thought. Uh, I noticed you got some really nice telemetry on the, uh, third-party hosted site that's acting as your applicant tracking system. Um, what I didn't see presented here was inbound referral sources. So like SEO, what kind of terms are people using to land on the career site? Um, what other sites are people linking into there from? What does that teach us about like what's working and what's not? You mentioned a social strategy and so like that, that was nice to hear some, uh, some data there. But just thinking about like, do we need an SEO strategy, an SEM strategy, TikTok strategy? You've mentioned social's working well. High Gen Z teachers, I don't know. Uh, be interesting to see where that goes. But, um, congratulations. It seems like you're, you're making some great progress here. So great work.
You said TikTok just now, didn't you? Yeah, no, because I actually was thinking the same thing because like only us old people are on Facebook anymore. So if you want to reach the younger generations, you're gonna want to go, um, Insta and TikTok and, um, that I can just see some fun little TikTok videos going out. Um, thank you very much for everything, everybody here that you do. Um, it's a huge job. Um, it's a really important job. Um, we can't do it without you. So thank you. And thank you for being here this evening too. Um, so Wendy, I know over the years, um, I've, you know, I've heard you talk about how hard hiring is and just like pulling your hair out sometimes that you're not getting responses. So it's been neat to see your creative, um, takes on how to do this. And you've been very adaptive and it just appreciate the effort that you want, you've gone to. And I know, I think you even went to like a conference um, on this too. And you came home with some great ideas and you were super excited about that. So appreciate all of the, um, thought time and, and the work time that has gone into this. Um, and I also am, I'm really excited about the international staff this year. Um, obviously there's some hiccups and speed bumps along the way and, um, it's a learning process. I did have a couple of questions on that. Um, do you know off the top of your head how they're distributed around the schools? Like, is it pretty even or are they heavily at one or more school?
Oh, that's a great question. So really, uh, MIT has the largest number of teachers specifically. The way their vacancy list turned out when we started this process, it, it ended up working out as such. Because what we did was we offered teachers a position in the district first. And then we, as, as time progressed, we, we earmarked for where they would be. Mae Maholand, our special ed director, and Susanna Fernandez Garcia did a fantastic job with those interviews and really really thought district-wide where people would best be placed and made a recommendation based on the interview. As you know, we had high priority schools that we were focused on. So of course those were filled first. And then we continued down accordingly based on our equity goal. So, uh, MIT for sure. And then we, then the next one, um, in line, we, is Garfield, um, and Hoover too. So those are.
That makes sense, yeah.
But in general, every school has an international teacher. Atlante has teachers from Spain only, but the others are from the other sites as well. And some of the Spain teachers are also at other sites, but Atlante didn't have any of, of the group that we're referring to tonight.
Thank you. Um, and then you mentioned that it's a three to five-year commitment for the international teachers. Is it also a three to five-year commitment from us? Or do we have the ability to release them if we decide to?
We have the ability to release. And their work visa allows them to seek employment in another district.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Um, that was all I had.
Do you want to go on with?
Cecilia, I can't see her right now. Um, Cecilia, if you have any comments, did you want to unmute?
Sure. Um, thank you, everyone in the HR team. Obviously you guys are an important asset to RCSD. Obviously you're a lot of the times the first face people see. And so it's very much appreciated, everything you guys do from Gabby, um, hiring all the subs and being there first thing in the morning. Um, I work for a neighboring district and so I used to do that about 14 years ago or so. So that's, and, and I, and I was actually glad to hear that the swing, uh, partnership has worked out for Redwood City, because I know what it's like, um, as the hiring person. And maybe even the office managers that are at the sites trying to puzzle in, um, the teachers and the vacancies. So you know, hats off to all of you for wearing so many. the teachers and the vacancies. So, you know, hats off to all of you for wearing so many hats in Redwood City. I love the attitude that everyone has. When Wendy, you talked about everyone rolling up their sleeves, even if there was bumps on the road. So again, it's much appreciated. Going to all the, oh my God, I just lost my.
The fairs?
The fairs, yes. You guys obviously think outside the box. You're just not sitting in the office saying, well, we don't have any, you know, anyone to fill in. So it's again, much, much appreciated. And I want to say thank you for whoever is driving all those new teachers and making them feel welcome. I think that says a lot about Redwood City. So again, it's just everything you guys do. It's much appreciated. And thanks. So thank you, thank you. And my kind of like recommendation, because again, I work as a classified employee in another district, is that perhaps in the future, it doesn't have to be this time, but maybe this time, encourage staff to maybe even just watch part of this meeting so that they can actually know what HR people do. It's not just you make a phone call and you hire someone. There's so many other things that you guys do and the role that you play and how important it is. So that classified employees perhaps talk about retention may actually even be willing to move from a school side into HR whenever a position is open and you don't have to look outside of the district office. So again, it's just a thought. You don't have to do this, but it'd probably be a good idea.
Hey, thank you for the suggestion. Thank you, Cecilia.
And I wanted also thank the whole staff, you know, for everything that you did. Not only for the hiring, not only for the job fairs you went to, but being so committed in making sure that we had staff members for all our children, not only for those students who are in special needs, but the regular ed classroom, along with all the classified people that were hired this time too. You also did a fantastic job on the welcome back. Thank you so much for being there. I'm talking to the, to Wendy and Erin's right hands right here, right and left hands that were there bright and early to get us started that morning. So thank you all so much. And Wendy and Erin for taking this forward and moving it in the direction that it has gone. Amazing. Thank you. Really appreciate it a whole lot.
Well, I, I would like to publicly thank you for letting us try something wild and different. School districts aren't doing this type of work. And in fact, I could kick myself, but we brought this idea to our Samhail County office and now they came and presented. So anyway, this might, this might expand, which is great. Great for everybody. You know, it's a, it's a bigger cause. Exactly. So I love that I can come to you, Dr. Baker with a challenge, a wild idea. Let's think outside the box. And you really listen and you, you think, okay, is this possible? Can we do it? You know, and you're, you're a good thought partner with that. And so that really helps us open our minds of what can be. And it's exciting. So thank you for that. And thank you to the board for all the support, especially in HR and all the topics that we bring to each meeting and certainly through some of the tougher times too. So thank you.
And HR department, you are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but you're also welcome to leave and go home.
Gabby gets here, Gabby gets here really early.
Okay, so we are moving to our consent calendar, which also includes eight point two, eight point three and eight point five. But before we vote on that, we do have a public comment. So if we can allow, oh yeah, he's got his hand raised, Mr. Robel. Thank you. So you have three minutes, Mr. Robel.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Great. So yeah, I would like to, I don't have the agenda, but the item that it pertains to the appointment of superintendent subcommittees. That's what I want to talk about. So I've raised this issue.
Four for the rest of the board.
Okay. So yes, so this, this issue is clearly, this is a legislative body that is subject to the Brown Act. The specifically, the Brown, the Brown Act says a committee advising a superintendent of schools would not be covered by the Brown Act. And let, and I'm quoting actually from the district attorney who sent me this. Unless the committee was created by formal action of the school board. Obviously this is created by formal action of the school board. You're voting on it tonight. And so these, these committees, these, like for example, the bond construction committee and the workforce housing committee are, are discussing very important things that the public has no knowledge of. There's no agendas. There's no minutes. There's no report outs. So Janet Lawson, for example, you know, has said a couple of times and Mike Wells, oh, the workforce housing committee met. Oh, the bond committee met, but there's no, that's all they say is they met. There's no, there's no report out of exactly what happened, what's going on. Furthermore, the district attorney sent me an email and said, and I'm quoting, with respect to the use of Prop 39 bonds, that the attorneys for the school district have reviewed the expenditures recommended by, have reviewed the expenditure recommendations by the board and have represented to our office that the funds are going to be used in compliance with Prop 39. So that means that the board somehow, which I'm, maybe I missed it, but I have never seen it. You've already decided how you're going to spend prop, the, the measure S money. I don't know. I would like, and maybe this has been happening in these secret superintendent subcommittee meetings. This stuff needs to be out in the open. If you're going to appoint these committees tonight, that's great. But then it needs to be subject to the Brown Act. The public needs to be, that needs to be agendized. The public needs to be aware of it and, and be able to participate in oral communications, just like we, just like here. And then there needs to be minutes from the meeting. So anyway, thank you for complying with the Brown Act and with respect to these secret superintendent subcommittees.
Thank you. And I just would like to make a point of clarification that these are committees that are convened by the superintendent. And what we're voting on tonight is which board members are assigned to them. And we do not have any committees that have a majority of the board sitting on them. So they are not actually subject to the Brown Act. So again, what we're, what we are approving as we do every year, as the school year starts and as the board changes when new people come on, we agree to which board members will be assigned. And again, they're not secret. They're all right here in public. So. With that said, there's no other clarification or anything. We can take a motion to approve the consent calendar, including eight, two, eight, three and eight, five.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
You all, those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So moving on to eight point one, adoption of resolution four, adopt the, a resolution to adopt the GAN limit. I don't know who's assigned to that. Is that Rick?
Yeah, it's Rick.
Good evening, board. Tonight we're bringing resolution four to adopt the GAN limit or also referred to as the GAN appropriation limit. This place limits on growth for expenditures for publicly funded programs. The GAN limit is a combination of property taxes, interest, other state aid that we receive, including LCAP funds that go into this calculation at the end of the 22, 23 school year and through the close of, through un-audited actuals. We are going to send to the director of finance for the state of California with approval that our GAN limit should be increased by one point eight million dollars approximately going into the 23, 24 school year. There is a worksheet on the agenda item that shows the numbers that came up with that calculation. And we are in compliance with statutory laws. And so with that all, if there's any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Eight, two and eight, three were on consent. So eight point four. Approval of 22, 23 unaudited actuals. Back to Rick.
And that is Rick.
I have no idea what that blue bar is on the screen. There we go. Good evening again. Tonight we are presenting the 22, 23 unaudited actuals. And I apologize in the presentation that was attached to the agenda, I had put in the 45 day budget revision narrative on the side. So tonight I do have the correct unaudited actual one, which says by September 15th that we have to reduce and give to the county office of education on audit actuals. As we can see tonight, it's September 27th. We have notified the county office and provided our un-audited actuals earlier last week. And tonight is simply board approval upon the presentation and adoption of the un-audited actuals. As you can see by the budget circle, we are at prior year un-audited actuals tonight. And then we'll quickly move into first interim with the information that we talked about at budget adoption, as well as the new information from the un-audited actuals. Creating, you know, what our story will be at first interim. And as we go through this, some of the discussion that we had during budget adoption with some of the transfers in that we talked about, as well as expenditure reductions and as well as revenue reductions to some degree, are going to tell a little different story than what we talked about at budget adoption with the amount of transfers in that we needed at that point in time. As we knew they would decrease and now we're starting to see that happen through the first, you know, 90 days of this school year. Going forward, I won't go through all this, but we know the governor's budget proposal comes out in January and then through second interim and then budget adoption in June. So the un-audited actuals are our year-end financial reports. As I just mentioned, they show our revenues and expenditures and our ending fund balances that are carried forward to the 23, 24 school year. These are then audited by our audit firm, which we expect to be onsite the last week of October and the first week of November. Hopefully we won't be going through the COVID extension periods with our auditors as we've had for the last several years. And that we're closer to the normal timeframe this year for audit completion in December. I have not heard of any extension this year. Other than if we were to request one. So we want to wrap those up in December. Send them to the state of California and then have a presentation on them in January. So what makes up the un-audited actuals and, and what is different from estimated actuals? It's certainly not limited to this list, but these are probably the most common ones that we deal with on a daily basis. Unanticipated revenue, revenue may be received a little bit different than we thought it would be based on a number of factors, including reductions from the legislature or the governor at some point, or our enrollment change when our original allocation that we thought we were going to get changes the amount of revenue we receive. Probably the, the biggest one that we deal with is purchase orders and encumbered funds that we either thought would be or expected to be here before June 30th. And they don't come in until July 1. And so that changes that funding source or that funding year. Or oftentimes, as we see with the LCAP, the best intentions aren't always carried out for a number of reasons. And then that money gets carried over to a future year, but it reduces the current year expected expenditures. And then expenditures planned for one year that are deferred. We ran into that much more last year when we had all of that big grant money come in that was booked in one year and then we had to move it out to another year because either through appropriation, we didn't receive it, or there was just no way to implement it in the time period that we were given. So that carried forward, not as much this year as last year. This is simply a list of our district funds of note on here. This is the first time in recent years that Fund 35 has been on here, which is the capital school facilities fund. And we'll talk about that later on in the presentation. Going straight into Fund Zero One, which is our general fund and the one that we commonly talk about, you know, during budget adoption or budget discussions with the board. You can see that as of our, an audit of actuals, 140 million, almost 141 million dollars of revenue for 22, 23 of note on here. And I mentioned it, we were able to have transfers in of RDA funds to zero. We originally had 2.7 million at budget adoption. So we were able to eliminate that through the close. On expenditures, pretty typical of what we have seen and in comparison to last year at this time, when I gave my first presentation on, on audit actuals of note, 74.66% of our expenditures are on our employees between salary and benefits. And as we talked about last year, and Elisa, you gave some good information on that as well. You know, our number would be higher if we were filling all of our positions and we weren't having contractors that get funded out of 5,000 rather than the one, two and three thousands that would bring us up closer to what is typically, you know, a California school district of, you know, 78, 79, 80% of their expenditures going to employees. So looking at Funds Zero One, you can see the entire budget cycle on this slide, starting with adopted budget and ending at un-audited actuals. The differences between estimated actuals in June and the un-audited, un-audited actuals that are in the board package. So you can see nearly a million dollar reduction in revenue through various, you know, revenue sources. And then 6.6 million in expenditure reductions. And of that, about 3 million of that is LCAP carryover, right? So funds that were intended to be spent last year that couldn't for a number of reasons, including hiring positions. And sometimes when you don't hire those positions, you don't implement the plans for those positions, right? So or, you know, we didn't do as much professional development as we had originally intended to, a number of reasons go into that. But now in the second year, those monies don't fall to the bottom line. They're actually carried over and added to the LCAP for on the spend next year. So down there you can see that the ending fund balance increased by about $3 million for 22, 23 compared to estimated actuals. When we go into the components of the ending fund balance, you can still see, you know, a very large carryover and legally restricted, which includes many of those one-time monies that we still have, the ELOP funds, the art, music and instructional materials grants that we haven't spent to it. As well as our routine restricted maintenance is in that account as well. I don't know the page off the top, but there's a whole full page on the un-audited actuals that show exactly what's in there for each of those items in the legally restricted carryover. We do have the 3.6 million of unspent grant funds, which primarily is the LCAP dollars that are moving forward to 23, 24, all resulting in that increased ending fund balance. Of note, just with not transferring RDA funds, you can see on the assigned for board mandated reserve of almost 1.9 million dollars, which at estimated actuals was at zero. So because we were able to reduce our expenditures through the, the various reasons, we were also able to put that money in there. So the reduction of the 2.7 transfer in and the 1.9 million additional, not additional dollars, but dollars that we'll have for other items in 23, 24, including, you know, the negotiations that are still taking place, et cetera. Here's a chart showing all of our funds, including Fund Zero Eight, our student body fund, our ASB account. Those are donations to the school site. We have added in our capital school facilities fund 35 with 4.2 million dollars and that is from our state facilities grant program. So we've received $4 million of that that we can put towards future projects. And we're in the pipeline for funding of about another 4 million coming up in the next 16. uh, coming up in the next sixty to a hundred and twenty days, uh, I would guess. Uh, you'll also note on here, Fund Twenty-One, uh, it was nearing completion last year, uh, and we did sell series A of Measure S. Uh, and at this point, we have not spent any of those funds or uh, planned any projects for spending, that'll be a process that takes place starting uh, in October with uh, items that will be brought before the board. So with that, uh, next steps, uh, first interim fiscal report in December. Uh, also expect the audit completion in December, the proposed budget, and then the second interim report uh, in March of twenty-twenty-four. Uh, so with that, I'll hand it back over to the board and if there's any questions.
It appears we don't have any questions, Rick. Thank you very much for your hard work and all that your department does.
Thank you, it's the staff, they, they do it all.
Thank you very much.
Um, and this item does need approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, thank you. Okay, so um, just a quick note that moves us, um, so eight point five uh, did get moved to consent calendar during um, changes to the agenda, three point one, um, we did get a late speaker's card on that, and so I would just, we're not going to reopen that item because it's already been approved when we approved consent. So um, if you would like, for Mr. Robel, I know you would like to speak on it, but you can go ahead and just um, email the board what you would like to say. We're not reopening the item. Um, so that brings us to nine point one, report from board members and superintendent. Whoever would like to go first.
I attended the first meeting of the, of SEPTAR uh, last week, um, which was great. We had a lot of representation from the district, talking about the special education services that we offer here. Maeve did a great job presenting it, um, and everyone else that participated in it. Many questions from parents, a lot of them were clearly new to not just SEPTAR, but also the district. And I had questions how that stuff went along, so I think it was a pretty helpful meeting and I was glad to be there.
Um, yeah, so I was also at that SEPTAR meeting and I agree, it was uh, really good. We had speakers from SEPTAR and then a number of them from the um, special department and everybody seemed to be really appreciative of the information. I uh, also was able to attend the Henry Ford Open House, which I'm sure was representative of what all the schools were doing. That was the only one that I was able to attend. Um, but it was great to get into the classrooms and see the teachers talking to parents. And then I saw Principal Knopf give um, her presentation of the parents, so they did a really good job uh, there and everybody, of course, is so excited with their new kids coming to school and all that. Um, I also went to a Redwood City Together event, it was a welcoming event. And uh, they gave out a couple of awards, including one to Familia Sanitas and um, one to Mr. uh, Tito, I think is his name. Um, who's done a lot of work with youth um, in our community, so uh, that was a really nice event. Uh, let's see, I attended um, Dr. Baker's super superintendent advisory committee on Monday along with Cecilia. Both of us were there and um, we actually heard from Anna and also from uh, the community school. So we um, got a really nice presentation of after-school programs. And I'm trying to think, what is, I've been on so many meetings and goal setting, thank you, yeah, which I know is something that you are really advocating for, so it was a great, great presentations from both of you. Sorry, I've just been in, so I do remember the presentation being great, I'm like, I've been in so many meetings. Um, trying to remember which one that was. And then uh, finally, you know, we just talked about the international uh, teachers and para educators that we've hired. I had the pleasure of um, helping out some of the teachers who were helping them get furniture and clothes and things like that. So that was kind of an uplifting thing that I helped with this week, um, which I felt really good about. And I think that's it for me.
Man, make, make me feel lazy, I don't have as long a list as you, it's very impressive. Um, I did have my first meeting with Haley Dupree uh, from Connect Charter School. And um, she was very happy to hear that the uh, hot water issue was getting resolved. It turned out to be a lot more complicated than uh, originally anticipated, but was very happy to see forward progress on that. Um, so yeah, it was, is great to get to know Connect a little bit better and share some of the approaches that uh, the district is using in our literacy curriculum, for instance, she was very interested in that. Um, and looking to uh, perhaps use some of that curriculum as well at uh, at Connect. So I think it's just really nice to have a, a bridge there, uh, as we're all trying to educate the, the kids in the district and just sort of share our best practices there. So that was lovely. That's all I got.
I think all I have is the, um, we had a, a bond committee meeting and um, a citizens bond oversight committee meeting. Um, and that was like, right after our last board meeting, so that's, can't even tell you right now off the top of my head what we talked about. Um, Cecilia, do you have any reports you would like to give?
Yes, hi, thank you. Um, my report is obviously um, Justice um, Alisa, the um, Superintendent Advisory Council. Um, and prior to that, both September fifteenth and the twenty-second were um, our events for the speaker series for the Latino Heritage Month. Um, and they were awesome, so Sylvia Mendez spoke to us about the um, segregation or her parents fought. It was the Mendez versus Westminster School District back in nineteen forty-six. Her parents were fighting for the desegregation of the Latino children, yet she thought all this time that they were fighting so that she could get a playground, because the school she used to go to didn't have a playground. So it was just a very great story that um, we're hoping to get more parents um, and students um, that attend those um, presentation so that I can actually hear, um, you know, that there are just people like them that can be somebody in life. Um, she was actually a, she is, or a retired nurse and also a hospital administrator. Um, and then on the twenty-second, Sarayi Espinoza Salamanca, who is the CEO of Dreamers Roadmap, is an application that allows undocumented students to get scholarships. Um, she also told us her story and how she grew up in LA. Between Redwood City and LA, and her counselor told her, people like you do not go to college. And here she is attending Santa Clara University now, and again, doing big things for our community. Um, we also heard from Dr. Richard, Richard Carranza, um, used to be the superintendent at San Francisco Unified and the chancellor of the New York Public Schools. Um, and so he told us his story as well, his parents, um, his mom was a beautician and the dad was a metal sheet worker. And his Latina counselor told him when he was in school that he should go to vocational, to a vocational program. And so again, we talked, you know, they talked about the barriers that a lot of the times people find um, along the way, and so it was just great to hear those motivation and empowering stories. Um, and that's it.
Thank you.
All right, what, some of you, what you've said already shared, I've gone to South City, the Redwood City Together, the executive board met, and um, we're looking for a new executive chair. I'm um, meeting with someone next week, hopefully that they will take on that role. Because as they take on that role, then our board members won't have to be part of the leadership chair that, that, you know, help Raphael run those meetings, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed. So there were not enough executive members at our meeting that we had last week to garner someone that would say, yes, I'll do it and staff will be with me. Um, there is one person that I'm trying to talk into doing it, so let's see what happens. Have that meeting next week on Tuesday, I believe. I think it's Tuesday.
And then let's talk, because I talked to a board member just to that.
And, and it's probably that superintendent's board member, I'm hoping, so it's with Crystal Luke.
Oh, okay.
She'll be on my um, calendar. Is it Thursday?
It is on your calendar.
It's on my calendar, well, I'll, I'll definitely. Yeah, yeah, so, so I'll definitely, you know, I think it's a go, but I think she just wants to know more info about it, you know, um, she wouldn't come in that day, it was hard. Okay, that'd be fine. Okay, perfect. Um, so, so that was a meeting that I attended. And because there are a lot of other things going on, there were other members that were not at the meeting. I was hoping that Melissa would be there, because there's some things that I feel need to come to the table, that Melissa can take back to um, city council. And then also we are two by two by twos, we haven't had those meetings in forever. And so we need to get back to those types of meetings. So we can start talking about, are we going to want to move forward at some of our school sites and look at the speed limit? As you know, South City did, if I'm not mistaken.
Alright.
Um, so that's something that I've talked to a couple of other council members that said, doesn't sound like a bad idea, but how are you going to get the information to, from parents indicate that it's maybe something that you should do around that, certain schools. So I'm hoping to get their, them involved. And by having those two by two meetings again, that will help us. So, and then, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't um, Belmont Redwood Shores start to sit on that two by two?
Well, they have their own, so they, I know that the city. The city does um, one with Belmont Redwood Shores and I guess Belmont, yeah, and Belmont.
Okay.
Right, and, yeah, but they, they have their own, separate from us, I believe.
I don't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I know that was a question that was asked when I was at Redwood City Together, and I said I wasn't sure because of the, you know.
Yeah, I, well, I remember them at some point talking about they had a, they had a separate one for them, but I don't, I don't know who sat on it.
Like I said, as I pointed out, I'm concerned about Redwood City School District. The one that's Belmont Redwood Shores.
Right.
Redwood Shores is Redwood City. But we'll see, we'll see how we can move that forward. The other piece is that I have um, a couple of meetings coming up regarding our strategic plan. I have um, Amy Christensen from CSBA, who's going to be meeting with me uh, to discuss this further. And then I'm also looking at another entity called Insight, Insight Education Group. Cabrillo Unified used them, was very um, happy with them. Uh, South City, in meeting with their superintendent last week on Friday, she said I wouldn't recommend who we went with. I said, I said, stay away, I will stay away. Um, so I have these two in line, you know, and, and, and move forward, all right? That's it for me.
Great, thank you. Correspondents. It's been um, emails have been pretty quiet lately, which is usually a good sign, so.
Yeah.
Um, we have a speaker's card for eleven point one, um, possible other business suggested items for future agenda. Usually this is a time for the board members to um, request items that we would like to um, uh, have put on the agenda, um, I'm going to just go ahead and say that to begin with, and then we've got three minutes, we can go ahead and take it.
Yes. Uh, so this is just a suggestion with respect to the scheduling of these board meetings. I brought this up before, but I think it would be really helpful to the community to schedule these not at the exact same time as the, either the Community College District meeting or Sequoia. So Sequoia and Redwood City always. People cannot watch both or attend both, and I, I don't know if that's by design or why not stagger it? So it's, you know, the, the different, they're different Wednesdays. Thank you. I, I hope, hopefully you can address that, because it's relevant to this topic. Thank you.
Sure, I mean, I can address that just right now, we're, we're completely different jurisdictions and there's a lot of meetings that happen in the county between city councils and high school district and school district and college district and healthcare district, and there's just absolutely no way that um, every single district is even able to coordinate calendars. So um, our, our CSD meetings are recorded and um, published, so anybody who's not able to make it to our meetings because they're attending a different one, will always be able to watch um, the meeting after the fact. So, does the board have any items for future agendas? Nope. Alisa?
No.
Okay. Um, do we have any changes to the board meeting calendar? Nothing. Okay. That brings us to thirteen point one, adjourning the meeting. It's excellent timing, nine oh five.
We forgot to take bets. I'll move that we adjourn.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.